Forum.
Let's see, so we got one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, so you have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll call our meeting to order and welcome you all to our March, the, let's see, March the eighth, Lake Forest Park Planning Commission meeting. And in advance, thanks for your time and being here tonight. And thanks for taking time to read the work that Attorney Pratt and Director Bennett prepared for us. Let's, uh, let's start with our land acknowledgement. Does anybody have our agenda up and would like to read that for us this week?
I have it up if you'd like to read it.
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home, our relationship to this history and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European American immigration began in the 1800s.
Thank you very much. And then I'd love to take a motion for our agenda, please.
I move a pool of the agenda. Second.
Third. I think we had David who came in on the second. Great. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. All right, Nick, we're off and running. Okay, we do have a meeting date on April 12th as per usual. Let Director Bennett or and myself know if you won't be able to make it, so we can make sure we have a quorum. And then we'll take any citizen comments here at the front end of our meeting. Do we have anyone with their hand up, Nick? And welcome Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, Jolene Jiang is has her hand up and I've, you can go ahead now, Jolene.
Thank you. Well, I have no idea what's come out of my mouth right now since I haven't thought about it because I'm tired and exhausted. But I do want to talk about the property, the Gary, the Rue Gary property, the reasonable use exception. I believe this is my ninth time making a public comment on this to the tree board, to the council, to you all. And just to refresh your memory, just in case, it is a property where this plot of virgin land never built on recently was bought for $40,000 and the Lion Creek splits it in half. And there are code around it, but because he bought it, he is applying for reasonable use exception. And so there are a lot of impacts are going to happen if he is let through. And I just, it's confusing because the council is over the moon about saving salmon. That presentation a couple of weeks ago was just wow, people were like, oh, my gosh, let's save these salmon, let's do it. And we're so excited. But it's like, first of all, they have to have somewhere to live. So Lion Creek is where they could live, but when you have these properties that are going to be harmed and the habitats or repairing zones are going to be destroyed, not alone, you know, also my slope that my house sits on also is being eaten away too. So, so the council seems very environmental and wants to save trees. The tree board wants to save trees. Everything that I've read about Lake Forest Park is green, but this Rue is not green. So if this, this goes, if this goes through, it goes against what LFP looks to be standing for. And so when I, when you do look at the reasonable use exception, I'd be happy to share the challenges of, of the problems because should the neighbor have to spend 350 hours, you know, while I juggle my dental cavities and a roof replacement and all these other things, but I still have to fight for this. How much time should I have to spend opposed to the person who's planning out the build? How much onus should be on the neighbor? It just seems kind of opposite of what should be happening. So I'm glad to be a resource. If you do go over the reasonable use exception and see if, if it is still valid and if it looks like a good process, I can share with you where the, the downfalls are. And I still, you know, open invitation to come over to, to see the property. We can walk around it and see some of the challenges. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, Nick? Okay.
He is only attendee right now, so that's it.
See that, okay. We, we will open this back up at the end in case anyone else joins us. Councilmember Bodie, welcome to our meeting and we'd love to hear an update from you.
Yes, thank you very much. I have a few items to update you on. First of all, and congratulations are in order to the Planning Commission. The council adopted the ADU, DADU ordinance unanimously on February 28th. And people spoke at the public hearing and, and your chair spoke at the public hearing. So we had a good, though not lengthy discussion, not too many people spoke, but there's a lot of interest and support, I think, overall for, for the, for the new ordinance and the new flexibility. And ultimately, after a lot of discussion, the council ended up, I'd say, you know, substantially in almost all respects, just adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And I think that Director Bennett did a good job explaining some of the, some of the questions or issues that council members had. So I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you very much for the hard work that went into that. I know it was months and months of work and careful consideration. And thanks also to Director Bennett and City Attorney Pratt for their help in getting all that together. I think the council is still interested in the concept of standard designs that could be used to streamline the costs and the process, but that, that will have to take place later. Related to that, though, is the question of state legislation on changing single family zoning to require multiple housing units. And as of right now, both the missing middle and the ADU bills, which were two separate bills, but with some overlapping coverage, have, have not succeeded in going forward. Most recently, the ADU bill, which would have said you have to allow three living units at a main building, an ADU and a DADU on properties greater than 4,500 square feet. And with a lot of other restrictions, that did not pass. In both cases, there were Democrat representatives and senators who couldn't, didn't go along with the provisions. The Association of Washington Cities actually mounted a fairly strong campaign pointing out the loss of local control and environmental concerns and so forth. So anyway, I think that we will see that again, but it's a good thing we didn't hold up our work on our own ADU ordinance, waiting for that because neither of those bills are being passed this time around. Also on Thursday, in news of the council, speaking of the state legislature, last session, the state legislature required that local jurisdictions upgrade their ordinances on emergency shelters and transitional housing, that they allow emergency shelters anywhere that hotels are allowed in zoning and also transitional housing within some sideboards in residential areas. We adopted, again with Director Bennett and City Attorney Pratt's assistance, interim regulations because we are still lacking some information that we're supposed to get from the State Department of Commerce about the scope and scale of what we're supposed to be covering. In the meantime, we developed some of our own metrics of what we were looking for with assistance from staff. But our, our emergency interim regulations basically have to be renewed every six months. So we are having a public hearing and looking at either discussion or a decision to extend those regulations. I actually think, given the short time that we had to put them together, that they're pretty good for interim regulations. So thanks for all the help we got on that. And so just a heads up, in case you're interested, that will be a discussion on Thursday. The other thing I would commend to you from the council meeting on Thursday is we have a very detailed city administrators report, more detailed than they usually are. And so it's very informative about a lot of things going on, not to mention crime activity in the work that our police department does. But one of the highlights that I'll mention is that it looks like we've been recommended to get $625,000 from the King County Conservation Futures Fund for park planning. And so that will help us get started with, with the Parks Board and starting a planning process for, to come up with a master plan for the lakefront property and address the complicated issues we have like safety, security, what kind of recreation, parking, impact on the neighbors, all those kinds of issues. It's going to take probably a couple of years. We probably won't get the money till the summer, as I understand it. If assuming it gets approved by the county council. But it will, it will let us, you know, probably start spending some of our own funds, hoping that will get reimbursed down the road to start public engagement and public discussion. So that's pretty exciting. And then I wanted to mention also while we're on the recording that the city council has invested pandemic funding to come up with a hybrid system, to have both in-person and virtual meetings at the same time for council meetings and other public meetings. Originally, we had thought that we might start doing that the end of March or April, but with supply chain issues and staffing issues, it's looking like May before we'll deploy that. And we do need, it requires more training than Zoom. And so we'll be taking some time to make sure that when we get it launched, that we do a good job. So with that, that was all I was going to cover. It's a lot, I know, but I'll take any questions you might have. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're up to our sign code update. And I think with that, I don't know, is Director Bennett or Attorney Pratt? Who, who wants to lead off the, the, you know, discussion on the revised documents?
City Attorney Pratt's gonna lead off. I just want to apologize for the record knocking her out of her status and coming to come back on. That was, that was all me, unfortunately. So that's why she disappeared for a while. It's trying to make her host from the wrong machine. Anyway, so, so yes, glad you're back, Kim. And I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Speaking of which, before you do that, Steve, can you or Nick put Jolene back in the attendee? List, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you got an amended version of the sign code in your packet. Only a small change from what you got in February, we just added back in the lighted banner definition that had been taken out in 2007. And since those signs are still being used, we put it back in the code. It seemed to just be kind of an oversight that it was repealed, but allowed them to be continued to be used. So they must have some value. Then in your packet also was my little synopsis of that US Supreme Court case that's looking at off-premises signs. And you probably saw the opinion from the US Supreme Court isn't due out until June of this year. And so my recommendation would be Planning Commission, just move forward. Do what you think you want to do with off-premises signs. You know, that decision will probably come out sometime when the council is considering this and they'll have to look at what that decision said. And if they need to do anything differently. But, you know, I could spend hours and hours reading all that briefing and not be able to tell you what the Supreme Court justices was are going to do with it. So I would say just, you know, move forward with what you think should be done in LFP with off-premises signs. And we'll just have to deal with it after that decision comes out if we need to make any changes. So that's my recommendation on what to do with that. What I would like to do is share my screen. And are you able to see that? Is the font big enough and all that? Yeah, okay. I hate it when somebody has their font so small, I'm getting right, my nose right up to my screen. So my plan would be just to move through with it, through this code with you and kind of bigger chunks to see if people have questions, amendments they'd like to propose, things they'd like to discuss with the other commission members. So we'll just start at the definitions. Anybody have any comments about definitions you want back in, questions, concerns? Okay. We will move to more of the needy stuff. Prohibited signs. General prohibition, specific prohibition. Anybody have concerns, questions? Wording you'd like to see changed? I did have, I was, I was reading through this again. I thought, oh, we could include smoking signs in the animated signs maybe, but it's not a big deal. Yes, nobody? Okay. Oh, Maddie.
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry. I wanted to wait and make sure if anybody else had a comment first. I had made a couple of notes. One was in section. Oh, you know what? I might be a step ahead. No, I'm not on prohibited signs. Under the general prohibition, it talks about the, the the city can destroy the sign, but removal of the sign of the city does not relieve the person responsible for paying accrued fines. I just wondered, is that, is that like if a lawn company puts a sign up where it's not and our, our city, you know, staff pulls it down? Do they, like, what is that process to enforce that? And how does that work so that we can communicate that properly, you know, eventually in our newsletter and on our website?
Sure. So it looks like I, I didn't really change much of this process. So it would be the same process we're using now. I don't know if this comes up very often currently.
I'm thinking we, I mean, I don't know how we enforce it. So I'm thinking there are times when the city gets blanketed with like lawn services signs on the telephone poles. And so, yeah, the question is, is it $25 per sign? And then who, you know?
$25 remove the, yeah, I would, I would think $25 a sign. I had to remove your sign. You stuck six of them on that pole.
How's that working?
That, that is, that is how it's worked. We haven't had a lot of cases or had to enforce it recently. But when we do, it's, it's a public works crew or someone removes a sign and they put it in the, the public, the, the public works yard. And so if somebody wants to retrieve it, they have to pay the $25 fine per sign that was, was removed if they want it back. Usually they don't want it back. So it eventually gets thrown away. So we don't collect many fees on, on signs.
That, I think that's what I was worrying about. The language in this case is, is it like a library fine that it just exists, like you owe the city this much money? I mean, or do you only owe it if you pick up your signs?
You, I mean, they, they technically owe it, but you know, it essentially, if, if they don't pick it up within a certain amount of time, they just forfeit the sign. And we don't keep a record of, you know, who didn't or did. You know, it's just, you picked up your sign when you, and you paid the fee, the fine, or you, or the sign got, you know, disposed of.
Okay. Well, thanks for clarifying that. And then I see that Jim's Commissioner Bernie or Burry has got his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I still have a concern about signs in the right of way. And I wasn't sure if this was the best place. So there's also another section that specifically refers to that. But my concern was, was about allowing those signs and whether really, we really wanted to do that. I mean, it's in here. We had some conversation about it. I see that there's a real issue that could come up with that, allowing those signs. I'm not sure why we would want to allow those signs in the right of way. And so I wanted to, to have the commission, I mean, you know, you say we, we really want it or we don't. I think it's a bad idea, but, but obviously the commission would need to make a decision on that. But I think it should be an affirmative discussion that, yeah, this is why we, this is something we want, and this is why we'd want it.
So, so you would say you, your preference would be no signs in the right of way at all?
Yes, because I'm not sure what purpose it accomplishes. This is a public right of way. It would lead potentially to a lot of lawn or type signs, whatever you want to call them. They're up, that would be very difficult to enforce. I don't know that we've had that problem, but I don't think that the city's allowed it in the past.
They have.
I'm sorry?
It has been allowed.
Okay.
So it's currently, you're allowed to put signs up in the right of way. Which is only like from the curb back towards buildings. It's not actually, you know, no, not in the roundabouts or anything like that.
So it would be in a grassy area between the curb and, and sidewalk potentially? Those sorts of areas?
Yeah.
Can you, can you, City Attorney Pratt, could you address this in relationship to item six in this section? In this prohibited section, what we, how, how we're looking at right of way versus the, the things that are listed in item six?
Yeah, so public property, say, you know, somebody puts a sign on the city hall building or, you know, I can't think if there's any dirt out there, someone could put a temporary sign. Or a on a, on city hall structure. You can't put them in the medians or roundabout. You can't put them on the sidewalks. So even those sandwich boards that you sometimes do see on sidewalks, they're not allowed there on the utility poles. So those are not allowed except for, and this is where they are allowed in the right of way. And it's only in certain spaces. Would you like to go down there to that section of the code now and see where they are allowed?
Yeah, I think I just personally didn't know what the difference was between a public easement and a public right of way.
The easement might be, we have, just going to get to O8O. We might have an easement for utilities. Trying to think of others.
Probably the most common. Right of ways usually like, like a, a right is granted to a pedestrian or to a motorist to traverse like a privately owned piece of land, whereas easement is usually a, an area of privately owned land that is allowed to use by like a utility.
Utility or maybe a driveway of the, you know, the property next door. Sign easements.
So for example,
Distance easements.
The little island of grass that's a, you know, Ballenger where 178 comes out. And, and then, you know, 178 continues on the other side of Ballenger. There's a, a strip of a median that's got grass and we often see signs in that. Is that considered a right of way? Or what is?
It is part of the right of way.
Okay.
If it would actually be median, then signs shouldn't be there. I can't picture in my head where you're.
It's, it's right outside of town center by Windermere.
I would have to say, it's terrible, but since the pandemic, I haven't been up to LFP in so long that it's hard for me to picture where these things are anymore.
I can let, let, let's let Lois send it. Is this on topic, Lois, or a new topic?
Oh, same topic, actually. I, you know, I guess with the right of way issue. The concern I have in kind of in line with Commissioner Bursey's concern is that with the sandwich boards, for example, in the city of Lake Forest Park, that there are not continuous sidewalks. And I see people using the right of way for, you know, pedestrian thoroughfare access all the time. And, you know, when those, I guess there's really no distinction for, you know, when the sidewalks aren't there, the people are walking down the streets and the, the sandwich boards, for example, in the Windermere or the real estate sandwich boards are up. It's, it's in the right of way and it competes, it's technically competing with the pedestrians, you know, trying to get through there as well. So that's just something that I was thinking about with regards to right of way versus, you know, it's the, the sandwich boards. It was what came to mind.
So we do have something that says if it's impeding the pedestrian, then the sign can't be there. So in a particular case, the city could say you cannot have your sandwich boards here because it's impeding pedestrian progress. But that's a case by case basis, rather than you could also say no sandwich boards in the right of way.
So to, to me, Madam Chairman, if I may, to me, I, I see a distinction between signs which may be providing direction that may be of some use and may serve some public purpose versus signs which are advertising a business offsite. And says, you know, for, you know, loans, you can take a cheap loan out of this business. Here's a number caller. I mean, these type signs that can proliferate, which I don't see the public purpose of that being in the right of way. Directional signs, I can see maybe there's some, some public purpose in that. And so I'm not sure if there's a distinction here that, that people would feel comfortable with or not. But what, I'm just struggling with what the perfect, the public purpose is of using that public right of way for signs to advertise somebody's business.
I think most a lot to the, you'll find campaign signs in the public right of way.
Kim, there's number four here where it says, should I try to be placed on a sidewalk or obstruct pedestrian, blah, blah, blah. If it's not a sidewalk, it's just kind of like the side of the road that so many of us walk on. Does that give them an out? Should, should we say sidewalk or, or whatever it happens to be called? It's.
Well, it does say or obstruct the pedestrian. So like you guys have said, in LFP, there's a lot of places where there aren't sidewalks. But it might obstruct pedestrians because they are walking on the shoulder. So we could, you know, expand on that if you thought it would be helpful.
I don't know. What if it's just that sidewalk or sidewalk slash shoulder or something? I don't know. I just see the word sidewalk there. And I think it gets people saying, well, it's not on a sidewalk, not obstructing pedestrians. So I think there should be something else along with sidewalk personally.
Uh, let's see, let's let Commissioner Clune, let's let David in. Sorry, David, I'm tied today.
No worries. Thank you. Hey, so just a clarification question about pedestrian right of way. Or when we're talking about pedestrians, are we also talking about bicyclists?
I think bicyclists are not supposed to be on the sidewalk. Yeah.
Not on the sidewalk. Not on the sidewalk, but in terms of, you know, where, where there aren't any sidewalks, occasionally there's a, you know, sandwich board for a coffee shop. I do a lot of biking, so I actually, I find myself that I have to ride around, uh, sandwich boards, you know, occasionally.
So that maybe add something also to, to item four here?
Well, I, I'm not sure. Let me ask a different question before we even do that. Um, and, and maybe this is directed towards Mr. Bennett. Um, you know, when we're talking about, uh, public right of way, is there an issue? I, I mean, what's, I, I don't want to cause any undue burden on the city that doesn't necessarily, necessarily need to be there by, by in- increasing, uh, more or uh, regulation where we don't necessarily need it, um, unless, unless it is an actual issue. So I'm just wondering, is it, is there a public nuisance with, with too much signage in the public right of way?
It's a matter of opinion, I would say.
That's exactly it. Exactly. And so we don't,
I guess we don't, uh, in response, we don't really get a lot of complaints. I think people just move them out of the way if they're annoying them. Yeah. And but, uh, you know, it, it, i- i- if, if we could beef this up a little bit, just to, to recognize the fact that, um, it, you know, not every pedestrian, um, way is a, is a sidewalk. Uh, and it, if we give the, the city the ability, if we had sort of a serial abuser of, of this, uh, give us a little bit more clout, they could say, well, this isn't on the sidewalk. So it's not, you know, but it's a, so if we, we had a little bit broader language, then, um, and, and maybe, um, address, uh, you know, broaden the people's rights that could be affected by pedestrians and, and cyclists using the shoulder. Um, but that, that, that certainly couldn't hurt just, uh, it, the matter of, you know, how many resources we want to put to enforcement. Uh, and so that could change over time. So I don't, I don't think there's a harm in, in being clear, uh, about a broader, uh, group of, uh, people's rights who could be affected by the errant signage.
Commissioners that still have your hands up, um, can you lower them if you're, if, if you have nothing more to say, but if you, if you do, I'd like to uh, invite you in for more comment. And I'd also love to hear from, um, Commissioner Gross or Commissioner Hicks if, if you want to weigh in as well.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Sure. Oh, so I have been a little quiet. That's partly because I'm been trying to reconcile where we are um, looking at this only because there's a few different areas that talk about temporary signs in this. And I'm wondering, if there's an opportunity to kind of make it a bit more concise as far as the references and, and things.
Um, so I think the, for the right of way signs, we were only going to allow temporary signs in the right of way. I think that's the biggest point. You can't have anything permanent in the right of way unless, um, the city probably would not be able to either unless it was, um, traffic signals or something like that, traffic signs.
So
Cause they wouldn't be a right of way purpose.
Without jumping ahead, I know we were tackling the prohibited section, but I think, um, Commissioner Hicks makes a good point. There are, there are some things that play with each other in the temporary sign section, the exemptions and the prohibited. And, uh, one of the things that I'll just add to this discussion are, there are a couple of places where it mentions that if it's a sort of impedes motorists or pedestrians and so forth. And so like one of those clauses is down under exemptions and oh four oh, and then we have up here and prohibited another one that, and, and there aren't, um, sort of terms around that. So I think as we talk about whether or not to allow temporary signs in the right of way or not, we also need to be able to like put the specificity in that makes clear what would be in violation because it seems, um, subjective, uh, in those per hit, like, you know, what would you consider making it, you know, a danger for a motorist or, you know, impeding a pedestrian or, or, you know, creating any sort of safety issue? And is, is it X number of feet back from a drive interest or X number of feet away from a sidewalk? You know, I think that that's one of the things we should add to this conversation. Commissioner Gross, did you have anything you wanted to weigh in on here?
I only had the one comment earlier so far.
Okay. Well, I think our first question is, you know, how do we all feel about, um, whether or not we allow temporary signs in a right of way? And then my second question would be, um, how do we provide more clarity on, on, you know, the terms of that? Uh, I guess just a straw poll, you know, with a show of hands, how many of you support, um, temporary signs in the public right of way? Oh, interesting. Okay. And how many of you aren't supportive of, of temporary signs in a public right of way? What about in easements? Uh, who's, um, I'm thinking in particular, maybe City Attorney Pratt, could you help clarify back to my earlier question? There's right of ways and then there's public easements. Maybe you can, uh, and scrolling to it, are we currently going, you know, talking about allowing temporary signs in easements?
Uh, we were just talking about in the right of way.
Just in the right of way, but I'm looking back under, uh, prohibited.
I think it's a public easements.
Um, so I was at six. Sorry, my, my, uh,
Yeah, signs within public property, public easements.
So this section
are prohibited.
Okay. So it's prohibiting. So it's, it's by, by this list, it's, you know, it's and by, um, calling it out under temporary signs. Basically temporary signs are only allowed on private property or right of ways is, is, is that correct?
Yes.
So am I right in thinking that if we wanted to, um, prohibit signs in public right of ways, that that would occur here in item six and then be removed from the temporary sign language?
Yeah, we could put it, uh, we could put it in here, any signs in the right of way. I would say that would be, I think you would really want to look at the constitutional issues. That would be a, um, I would call it an extreme departure
Okay.
From what most cities do in Washington at least.
Um, I think we're all, you know, having to wrestle with, uh, you know, what does this mean when we're not managing content? Um, I did notice, and I don't want to jump ahead, but I did notice that you put language in for, um, like the temporary signs would require permit if up for more than seven days.
Mm hmm.
So maybe we can postpone that. Okay. Commissioner Gross and then Commissioner Burn, uh, Burry.
My, my, my issue with signs on, in the easements and on telephone poles and that whole area is that they go up and then they're just there. And it just looks trashy for a long time.
Yeah.
If they could be up and then taken down, fine, but they, they, people don't come back and take them down. They stay up there for months and it just looks bad.
Okay. And great. And by this language, we're, we're actually going to prohibit, um, temporary signs in those locations. Correct?
Right.
They already are.
They are, yeah.
You can't put a, you're not supposed to put a sign on a utility pole.
I think what's confusing is a resident, that is not evident, but that's even a rule in our town. So I, I think we see the, these in those spaces a lot. So I think there's confusion that it's somehow allowed now. And okay. Um, Commissioner Burry?
So I, this question is really for Commissioner Pratt. Is there, uh, and that gets to the issue of any constitutional prohibition. Uh, is there a possibility to draw a distinction between a directional sign and an advertising sign for a business, which is in the right of way? I mean, I, I have less concern about directional signs if somebody's having an open house. Yeah, there's a, there's a temporary sign up for a day to say the open house is this way for a house sale. Um, on the other hand, I don't see where there's a public purpose to have a business advertised in the public right of way. And I draw that distinction. So I know that obviously the Gilbert decision, there was content, it cannot be content based. Uh, so that's part of the question that I would raise. And then that further, um, there may be some that would want to have political signs. I'm not a huge fan of political signs in the right of way, but there may be some that would want to have political signs versus advertising for a business. And I'm not sure that distinction can be drawn either.
So I think the distinctions you're wanting to make are based on content. And so we would have to meet a, you know, a, meet that high burden, the constitutional test. So it's harder to do, even if, even if it's the, you know, um, my, um, here's birthday party this way, we're still reading the sign. So even though we find that's not as harmful because, uh, you know, it's not as obnoxious to us as the, the new, um, chicken place. We're still reading it. And so that's content. Um, and that would be very hard to make that distinction. If we're making distinctions, it should, you know, if we can make it on safety or aesthetics, we're much better off. But that sign for the birthday party is as unsafe or safe as the sign for the new chicken place. And so it doesn't, it doesn't help us out. Those are difficult, very difficult distinctions to make. And I would say, some people would say the purpose behind my chicken, new chicken place signs is advertising. LFP will be better off if they, everyone comes to my new chicken place. So some people would say there is a purpose and that advertising is legitimate purpose.
Commissioner Hicks, thank you, uh, City Attorney Pratt.
Thanks. I was curious if there, if we can require that temporary signs have a date placed on them. And that way it's easier to track, you know, this two week period or what, whatnot.
Mm hmm.
And that, that way we're not, you know, a sign can be removed regardless of whether it's for a birthday or an open house or who knows what the person forcing it just has to check the date that's required to be on the sign.
Yeah, I think, let, let me mold that, I'll mold that over. That's an interesting idea.
Um, I wanted to get us back on track, um, and, uh, can I give the mic back to, uh, City Attorney Pratt to move us through the rest of the prohibited section. And then I think, um, Commissioner Hicks, when we're down, uh, into the temporary sign terms that she's outlined, we can, I, I think that's something we should definitely have a discussion about. Does that sound okay with everyone?
So we're, we're back up in the prohibited signs.
Were there any other comments on prohibited signs that, um, you wanted to discuss? Commissioner?
Off premises signs. This was in the current code that they weren't allowed. Any concerns about that?
I don't. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I did want to ask, um, in item, um, item one on, uh, under prohibited, you've, uh, defined animated signs and up in the definitions, there was, um, uh, changing signs are allowed. And I couldn't just figure out the distinction between changing signs and animated signs, uh, within the definitions.
Um, changing signs, it's changing message signs. And those are the signs like, uh, like the reader boards.
Right. But when I looked at the definition for animated sign, I was, I was having trouble distinguishing how they're different because we're prohibiting animated signs here and they do have a mechanical component.
And so, right. I, I think what we were trying to say is we'll allow you to have the changing message sign and anything else, no, even though the changing message sign might be considered an animated sign. So we were trying to make that distinction. The changing message sign is an existing allowed sign in the code. So we didn't want to take those away.
Do we need then to clarify here just for readability that any animated sign, um, with the exception of a changing message sign? Or, or does that matter?
I'll make a note and see if we can work that in.
And then, um, I just wanted to point, unless anyone else has anything with, um, the prohibited, you know, section, anything to discuss. Um, I did want to, you know, just come back to the fact that I, I think that we, we, it would be beneficial if we had more specificity, like on item four, no sign, they impede free, um, ingress and egress from any sidewalk, pedestrian, walkway, door, window, et cetera. And I just wonder if that's, if that's too, um, subjective, if we need to indicate like a certain, you know, um, measurement back, uh, from, from any of those locations. Do, do you have advice, uh, City Attorney Pratt?
I think my recommendation would to either not make it real specific because I think it could be depending on the circumstances, a distance could be different. You know, one block to the next, one parcel to the next. So I would, um, I guess I would, I would recommend not adding specific footage or something like that. There will be some discretion in there, which I understand is uncomfortable.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, I, just before we leave this section, I just would really like to encourage, uh, some wording, thoughts on wording that would include the right of ways that are being used by pedestrians as pedestrian thoroughfares as uh, an area where it would be prohibited as well. Cause I, I guess I'm not getting that clearly in the, the prohibited areas. So I don't know if it'd be wording such as, uh, you know, it, or right of way that is non-motor vehicle, uh, used by non-motor vehicle transportation such as, you know, uh, and I'm thinking kids on skateboards, bikes and, uh, pedestrians. Uh, again, addressing areas where the, the sidewalk is, uh, not present.
Thank you for that. Any other, uh, input on the prohibited section before we move into exemptions? Okay. It's all you, City Attorney Pratt.
Okay. So these are exempt from getting a permit. And so we included probably the biggest one, maybe for you guys is temporary signs that are the smaller signs, um, like most political signs. And so these would be the three feet uh, by four feet in height. That might be one you have concerns about. They would not have to get a permit. So someone can just go put it out there. It still has to comply with code things like it can't impede pedestrians. But they don't have to get a permit. Um,
Time limits.
The temporary, it would be a temporary sign. So it would be subject to the time limits that we have for temporary signs. We could, um, add that in here.
I suppose that also means that if it was for the chicken shop or, uh, sign up for seasonal soccer, any of those things that those would be, as long as they were this size, they could go up.
Mm hmm. We could put a reference to the temporary sign rules up here.
Yeah, I actually had a note to myself in this that just suggested changing that I, or that section C to temporary signs as permitted in section eighteen fifty two forty five.
Good.
That's helpful. Thank you. Anybody else have comments on the exemption section? I only have one question on exemptions. Where do little libraries stand in terms of our signage code?
With the little lending libraries?
Yeah, and little food pantries.
I don't think they're going to qualify as a sign.
Okay.
Those would be considered an accessory structure.
Very little.
That's funny. Um, okay. I just wasn't sure if we needed to have an exception since some of them have messaging on them and, um,
If they've got a message on them, we'll need to look at it, but just having that little shelter in the door with the books. It's not a sign.
Okay. Okay. Um, well then I think we're ready for the next section.
So here we go, the temporary signs.
Here we go.
So it would say all temporary signs placed within the city have to be all of these. I don't know if, are you interested in removing illumination? Don't want those things lit?
I'm interested in either limiting the brightness of the illumination or disallowing them.
So anybody agree with that?
Yeah, I do too. I feel like the whatever is creating the illumination to it, just adds another level of complexity for removal if put in a, a wrong place, which puts a burden on our city staff, um, and especially disposal. So. Like to come back to Commissioner Hicks's recommendation too, in the section of the dating of the signs and also taking a look at the timeframes that temporary signs can be placed, whether they're permitted or not.
What was the second thing you said? Sorry, dating the signs and?
The timeframe that temporary signs can be, um, left up, permitted or not. I'm just scrolling through my notes. I don't see it readily. Did we put a time limit on them?
You know, I don't think we did. I think we didn't, um, where it says seven days is if you're going to have it up longer than seven days, you have to get a permit.
So what happens for those that are exempt?
They don't have to get the permit. Um.
And with no timeframe, that means they could stay up indefinitely.
Right.
That seems challenging.
Mm-hmm. So a dur- you guys are probably wanting to consider duration.
Yeah.
However, I, I would say that duration probably only comes into play if the signs are in the right of way. Cause I wouldn't want a duration attached to a sign that's in my front yard. You know, this goes back to like the, uh, I don't know, the political message signs.
Yeah.
Ideology signs.
And a- advertising, all of those things that, that, I mean, it's more just, um, having a way to control a little bit of, of the volume of just signs everywhere, particularly if we're not, if city staff is now having, you know, many more signs to remove and, um, dispose of and, and we're not collecting fines for it. It just seems like an administrative nightmare to, to not have that.
Was there a suggestion on the timeframe, uh, for this duration? You want us just to kind of look and see what other cities allow? Do you want us to judge something?
Yeah, I have a pretty conservative view, so I, I think I'd love to hear from the rest of the commissioners on, you know, what their first sort of sense is on timeframe.
For whatever reason, I was thinking two weeks or something came into my mind for like the political signs, I think they're required to be removed two weeks after an election. So I just kind of always took that mentally as a standard for any temporary sign.
Well, I have to say, as somebody who participated in that this last year, I would be thrilled. I, I went out of town and then I came back one weekend and I had worked pretty hard to only have my signs in, um, people's yards. And when I came back in from out of town, like all the right of ways just blew up and I just, I, I personally am, would vote that it's a much shorter timeframe that they're allowed up than, than how it exists today. So if anybody has an opinion than that, that'd be good to bring up.
I, I agree.
But there are restrictions though, on what you can do with the political signs and they have been changed. And so I'll get you those.
Okay. Meaning, uh, we can't restrict the timeframe that they're up?
Yeah, there's been changes recently and I'm sorry, I can't recall. Um, two weeks ago, I think I knew what they were.
That would be interesting because that is content, right? And so, um, then I guess the question is for people who put up advertising, um, within the parameters of the exempt from getting a permit, you know, and, and, uh, I s- I'd love to hear from everyone else. I think I've probably made my point of view clear.
I actually think that's the difference now is you can't, um, you can't say a political sign has to be taken down two weeks after the campaign because that's based on content.
Right.
And so it has to be, all temporary signs have to be taken down two weeks after your event or something like that. I think that's the most, that's the more recent change.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, uh.
Well, basically, but I think basically what you're saying is you have to treat all signs the same, right?
Right.
Can't treat political signs different. So if we had a two week limit, it would apply to all signs and it would discriminate.
Would, wouldn't if it applied to all?
Would not, yes.
Yeah, right, right.
Commissioner Gross?
I'd be in all in favor of limiting to two, to one week or less personally.
And I would concur with the one week or less as well.
In, in the right of way.
Yes.
Uh, again, I will say too, as somebody who participated in a lot of signage activity, um, I think for, for, as a neighbor to each of you, um, I do think that that is important that if people are going to put political signs up, they can put up as many as they like if they put them in people's yards. Um, but where they clogged up Ballenger and five twenty-two and were just all, all over the place, it was pretty maddening. Um, just to, you know, see that impact on the city. So I, I'm totally in favor of one week, but I, I would love to again hear from other people who, you know, may feel differently about that timeframe.
One thing to also consider on the political signs is, um, how it might affect a campaign if someone isn't able to get permission from private property owners to put up their signs, because you do have to have that permission. Um, how will that affect their campaign? Um, it's just something to consider.
If they're not liable to get permission, then not sure they're going to get many votes anyway.
Trying to figure out how to say that correctly.
Well, maybe, maybe all my constituents live in apartment buildings.
I, I think that's a, a fair point, um, Attorney Pratt. I, I don't have an answer to, to that, but.
Don't either.
Yeah, I, I, um, yeah. David?
I, I was just going to agree with what Attorney Pratt is saying about that, that it could very much be uh, a concern for individuals who do not have access to these neighborhoods because they live in apartment buildings and, and, uh, do not know as many people because of their backgrounds, because of their, uh, their living situation. So I would be very careful about that. And, and I do have to say, I, I'm fine with two weeks. I don't think that that needs to be changed. So long as there's a limit, I, um, and that that limit is, is, is followed, although I do see that it's not always followed after an election, but, but for me, I, I think two weeks is fine.
Anybody else want to comment on this topic of, um, how long a temporary sign can stay in a public right of way?
So I, I guess, can you just clarify what the seven day is then? The seven day is a permit, uh, does that apply to what then temporary signs is what I thought?
Any temporary sign that's going to be up longer than seven days? So that's to.
Are we?
That's also, that's also not exempt, right?
Yeah, and only the smaller ones are exempt.
Right.
So would this be like the Lorax sign that was up for quite some time that they could have gotten a permit to have that up? And it would, the permit would have provided for a timeframe? Is that an example of when the permitting process would be used?
I think that would have been, uh, an exempt sign, but, um, correct me if I'm wrong. So you, Attorney Pratt, because it's a, it was a, just a big kind of political statement sign. It wasn't, uh, related to a campaign.
But it exceeded the size that we, uh, indicated here for exemption.
So, yeah, it's like somebody putting a, a flag on the side of their house. Uh, this was on, this was not, this was on private property. Uh, and so it was just a, uh, you know, philosophical political statement. To, uh, my impression at the time was that we didn't really have the, um, wherewithal to tell them to take it down. We didn't have the, the law on our side to do that.
Mm-hmm. I, I, I mean, prior to you guys making all these changes, the city's code was quite problematic to enforce under the current case law. So I don't know if that played into it or not, um, in, into not requiring the removal. But if it, if it didn't meet the, you know, your, uh, if it didn't meet new, new size requirements, that's completely enforceable.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't have a problem with it. I was trying to find an example of a temporary sign that exceeded the, um, terms that we've set forth for being exempt from a permit.
Mm-hmm.
And that would then have a timeframe associated, I assume, with the permit. And so I was just simply asking, for example, a sign like that, it, to me, under these recommendations would be, it would have to be permitted and it would have a, on that permit, a timeframe, whatever that would be.
Right, well, yeah, depending on what we recommendation, it sounds like.
If I wanted to put an eight foot by twelve foot sign in my front yard saying whatever I wanted it to say, um, that would have to be permitted and to have a timeframe associated with it, correct?
And I do not.
According to this, like.
Yeah, um, but in, in a residential zone, you wouldn't be able to put that big of a sign in your front yard.
What stops me from doing that?
It would be, you'd only be allowed a temporary sign in your front yard and that would be too big. We've got some size restrictions in here.
But if you put it on your wall of your house, then you could do it.
But not on your fence.
Not on your fence. That was the next thing I was going to ask was, are there any of these places that you think sign is fine? Maybe on a fence.
Well, I, I put a question in here too. What distinguishes a sign from art? Because there are a number of fences in our community that have statements or imagery that you could interpret as art or signage.
I think we'd have to look very closely at the definition of sign that's in there. Strictly art, you know, the picture of flowers or something, it's not going to be a sign, but yes, there can be a definitely a mixture, especially on large murals or something like that. It can become problematic.
Commissioner?
For me.
Yeah. Well, first I just, uh, Commissioner Clu- Cluno, uh, your hand is still up. Did you still have something you wanted to say? And, and then I'll, uh, have, um, Commissioner Bury weigh in.
So I actually had a, a real question about this when I read through this. I, I, in a previous life as a, as a planning director and a manager, I've gone through this issue about what is a sign and what is art? And it is really difficult at times to do that. And one of the cases that we had, the jurisdiction it was, was there was this huge plane on the side of a travel agency that was considered to be art and not a sign. When it seemed like it was advertising the travel agency to me, but that, so that really is that, that's a distinction. And this came up actually in our neighborhood where, uh, someone had a picture of, of, of music and a drummer when they teach, taught drumming lessons. So I would ask Commissioner Platt in both those cases, is that airplane a sign? And is the, the drummer on advertising a business potentially a sign as well, or is it art?
Looking at our definition here.
As I read the definition, it was kind of not exactly clear.
So the, you know, the musical notes and things, advertising the, I think that, did you say lessons? You know, maybe you would say, well, that's a painted wall design that's representing a service. But those close calls get, th- those get very tricky. Um, and, and certainly we would have to look at those on a case by case basis. There's a very famous case, I shouldn't say famous, there's a case where the, the logo of the business was an octopus. And so you had this mural of an octopus. You know, was that a sign or was it just a mural of an octopus and it was art? Those become very difficult cases. I'm not sure we could define our way out of that dilemma.
Um, Director, Planning Director Bennett, do you have, um, any, any feedback on this? Like what would make things, um, less ambiguous for you from an enforcement standpoint?
Well, um, I guess from, from the standpoint of staff, I think we'd want, we would, uh, you know, prefer to have language that would help us stay out of the debate that we're talking about, uh, ideally. But, you know, I, and, and, you know, somebody, uh, makes a statement. Um, I, I was, I, I was, um, thinking about, you know, how, how do we distinguish? Uh, if somebody puts something on the side of a fence, uh, it sounded like, uh, there was a consensus that that's a sign. But if I put it on the side of my house, it's not a sign. Um, and, and I, I guess I wasn't really seeing that, that, that we, we, we have that uh, distinction in the code. So maybe City Attorney Brett, you could address that. Uh, but, but I wish, I would say that the more we can define that, uh, or we can, if we can find a better definition, what helps, which helps us uh, tease out those gray areas, then, you know, that might be some useful, um, uh, work before our next meeting, see if we can, uh, find, find a better definition. Cause, cause I, just based on the, the coding of the, it looks like, um, City Attorney Pat, we're basically working with the definition we've had. Uh, but we haven't really updated that section. So this is a, this is a, you know, an area where we have wrung our hands quite a bit with, especially like the Lorax sign because there were a lot of people that, you know, did not agree with the message on that. But we, um, you know, looking at that definition, uh, from, that's still in there and uh, didn't really feel like we, we have the wherewithal to regulate it. But I, I actually would be more concerned that we, that if your opinion now is that we, we should be regulating that sign that's, uh, just on the side of somebody's wall or sign, side of their, their fence that's on private property and it's not actually advertising. Uh, I mean, it's, it's not functioning, um, you know, typical, what is, is the way a sign usually does. That's probably getting into an area where, you know, we, we are, we could exhaust a lot of resources uh, and, and may not be, you know, uh, found to be in the right by, by, uh, using our, our enforcement efforts on somebody who's just making a philosophical free, free speech type of statement.
And Steve, you brought up the issue of a sign on the, if it was a true sign on the wall of a home, then we would look at the, um, regulations for residential, for RM and RS zones. And there we're allowing addresses and temporary signs, no home occupation signs. And then the only, you'd be allowed a wall sign if it was for a non-residential use in a residential area, like a church or a school are sometimes located in residential zones.
Is that D one?
Yes.
Um, I want to, uh, have Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Hicks be able to weigh in. Their hands are up. Thank you for waiting. Commissioner Hicks?
I was going to, kind of legal first, but I'll, I'll go ahead. Um, yeah, so my comment earlier about being allowed to do signs on walls, I missed that qualifier that it needs to be zoned as a non-residential use. So I think that is important. I probably confused Director Bennett with that comment. But, um, you know, this discussion's made me think more about those, um, those limits on temporary signs back in, was it here in section forty-five? those, um, those limits on temporary signs back in, was it here in section 45? And I think the one that really becomes confusing, um, you know, in section D is that no temporary sign may be placed on fences. All the rest of them seem very, make a lot of sense and I think are easy calls to make. But then this question about no temporary signs placed on fences, I see as being confusing, both from enforcement, but then also just from, um, I guess a community member thinking like, well, that's my fence. It's part of, it's extension of my house. It's maybe not in the right of way. So who is anyone to say what I can paint on my fence or what I can write on my fence? So I would be in favor of removing that.
And are you thinking then it just counts against their two allowable signs?
Um, I'm not sure. Because i- in my mind, maybe somebody should be able to paint a large mural on a fence. But I guess that starts becoming that question of whether it's art or offense. But maybe we can have that discussion in another way. But, you know, we don't need to limit it here.
Does anybody else have a, uh, uh, so Commissioner Hicks is, is basically proposed that he would be comfortable with just eliminating, um, this, uh, term, uh, not allowing temporary signs on fences. Uh, does anybody have an opinion about deleting this item? Uh, Commissioner Gross and then Commissioner Hicks, if you're done, if you'll put your hand down, please. And then Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, at, at this point, I'm not in favor of, uh, of removing, uh, D2. I think that needs to stay there. Uh, at least we have more conversation about it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Earlier, there was a comment about, I think, the overlap in some of these sections, like can't be hazardous here, four and five. Those may not even be needed because we already prohibit all signs in these areas. So we can probably remove both of these.
Would they still be applicable? I guess, would there be any enforcement if somehow your private property, you know, were not laid out on a tidy grid? Um, is there any possibility that your private property may, you know, create, with a sign on it, you know, create a vision, uh, an issue with sightlines?
Then I, um, there are sightline easements on private property. So yes, it could. Um, if you put one in, in one of those easements where I assume the sightline is needed, so it could cause a problem on private property. Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think better safe than sorry, you know, to have some language that can be used. Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Gross.
And yeah, I think what Kim just said is, is another example up at Lakeport Park Elementary. I can see, uh, uh, open split rail fences up there where the little kids come walking out, uh, walking down the street and somebody could pull out of their driveway. If they had signs on there, they wouldn't see the little kids, even though it's a fairly open fence. So.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, that's true.
So we have one person in favor of removing D2 and one person in favor of keeping it. And we've acknowledged through our discussion that that doesn't cover whether, I mean, what might be prohibited on the, uh, on a fence would not be prohibited on the side of a house. Is there anything more we want to say about that or we, we need to give, um, City Attorney Pratt sort of a decision? Do we want to think about it until our next meeting or do we want to do a straw man poll here? Uh, Jim?
I, I'm, I'm okay with the straw, straw person poll, certainly, but I, there, there really is a distinction potentially with something that's on a house that is significantly from right away versus something with a fence which is right on the right of way. There, there is some qualitative difference with that as well that we ought to think about.
Okay. Well, let's just do with a show of hands. How many are in favor of removing item D2 that no temporary sign may be placed on fences? So how many people are in favor of removing that? How many of you, with a show of hands, how many of you are opposed, um, to removing item D2? And then Walter, do you want to maintain your position of being for or against the removal of that?
I'm for.
You're for removing it? Okay, so, um, I think that just based on this, will, uh, City Attorney Pratt will leave this in, uh, based on a majority opinion. Okay. Is there anything else you want to point out in this section? Either, um, City Attorney Pratt or Commissioners?
Size. Um, are you fine with the six feet? Four feet in height?
What would the, what would the timeframe be currently? Um, we know that would have to be permitted, but how long could a neighbor leave something of that size up?
A temporary sign? We don't have a duration. In here now, you guys want to look at one?
Okay. For permitted temporary signs?
Right, there's not a duration. You just have to get a permit.
Okay. And does anybody want to weigh on, weigh in on that? If your neighbor puts up a, what is the maximum? Six feet by four feet? A six feet, feet by four feet sign, they have a permit. How long do you want your neighbor to have that in their yard?
Six foot area, no higher than four feet, sorry.
Gotcha. Um, Commissioner Lee?
Oh, actually, I just, yeah, six square feet. That makes sense. I was reading a six feet and that was gonna say that's really quite large, but no, six, yeah, I'm okay with six square feet.
What about a timeframe on, um, how long that can stay in your neighbor's yard?
I- isn't it seven days as?
We don't have a timeframe on it. It's indefinite as it stands right now.
If you want it to be up more than seven days, you have to get a permit.
A- as long as it's regulated. I like that language. I think it's pretty clear.
Uh, Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, I, I think we need to have a time limit, um, put on it. I don't know what that limit is, but I don't want it to sit there indefinitely.
Um, and then also could I ask a clarifying question, uh, from, uh, City Attorney Pratt? Who decides whether or not to permit a temporary sign since we can't permit it based on content?
Uh, the permit goes to the planning department and they make that decision only based on the criteria in the code. So does it meet the size? Where are you going to put it? Are you allowed to put it there? So it would be more of a, just check the box.
And it could, but it, uh, under the new rules, it could say anything. It could, you know, be fluorescent pink and say, you know, I hate trees. I mean, it could, right?
Let's say I hate trees.
What?
It could say, I hate.
That's what I mean. I'm, uh, obviously picking something.
You could do that now, too.
Right, right. But we're revising the code now. So now would be a good time to consider what is allowed and not allowed, right? Um, I depend on you to tell us what's overreach, but I think.
I would say, I hate, I hate trees is not a commercial sign. So we're gonna be, it's gonna be very hard to prohibit that sign. But what's the reasoning for?
If we had a duration on how long you could have temporary signs up, then.
Duration, then that sign comes down to at the end of duration, yes.
Right.
So I mean, when, when we put this draft out for you, Stephen and I talked about duration and didn't put one in, but it's obviously something you can consider and you know, decide whether or not to put one in.
Do you, either one of you have a problem with a duration that we should know about before we have discussion on whether to add it or not?
I think any duration causes maybe, um, administrative or issues of, um, somebody having to go out and take out all the old signs. So if it's one week, that's maybe more work than if it's two weeks or a month or.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I guess, uh, perspective, we, we, we would want to, if we're gonna permit a sign, we want to allow it to be up for, you know, uh, maybe 30 days or something like that, because what we end up getting is a stack of permits uh, for, you know, like, um, uh, you know, whatever event, uh, a, um, a business wants to have, it's going to go on longer than a week. So that we'll get five permits, uh, permit applications. And so there was nothing really prohibiting them from having sequence permit applications one after the other. So, so we have to just create some more paperwork. So let's pick a time, you know, that, you know, like, thirty, thirty days would be, if, if they're gonna get a permit, it seems like that's a reasonable amount of time, uh, you know, if, if between the, uh, the temporary, uh, that's the seven days, uh, if they're coming in to get the permit, let's give them a month. Uh, that would be my, my recommendation.
Uh, Commissioner Gross, is your hand up for comment or?
I was just gonna say some time limit, whether it's 30 days, 60 days, and I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Bennett, but, uh, but it, and, and not that the city's got to go around and remove these signs, but if a neighbor can complain about it, at least, at least something can happen. Otherwise, it's just up there indefinitely. So I, I don't care if it's 30, 60, 90, six months, doesn't matter, as long as there's a time limit. So there's not just sitting there forever.
Uh, and then, uh, Director Bennett, you brought up a good point, too. What, you know, is there a, a maximum amount of time per year that you can have a sign or can you simply apply before your 30 days is up for another, you know, six month permit? Or is that part of what we should consider here?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that is a, that, that, that could be a valid concern if somebody really wants to gain the system. They could just, even at 30 days, they could apply for, for, um, six, uh, uh, or whatever, uh, a, a, a year of them, a year's worth. So, um, it might be that, um, you could just say, and there, there won't be, you know, more than, um, uh, whatever, two consecutive permits, uh, you know, for, for, so like every six months or something like that.
Um, I'd love to hear from the rest of you on your opinion about, um, time limits and, and renewals or reapplication periods. So that City Attorney Pratt can work on additions.
Yeah, what, so what I'm trying to wrap my head around is understanding, um, how, I guess this current section of temporary signs impacts temporary signs that might be placed in somebody's private property outside of the right of way. Um, because I understand if it's, we have an entire section about signs that are exempted from permit and that, you know, one of the key qualifiers for those that are smaller than three square feet in size. So between three and six, you need a permit and that's kind of the area that we're talking about right now. And associating a duration with those. Um,
And I think the right of way, right? If it's on private property and small, you know, it, um, it can stay up indefinitely. Right?
Any of the smaller, the smaller temporary sign?
I thought, I thought the smaller temporary signs, I thought in our discussion, we said that if it's in a right of way, it has a limited, you know, two weeks that it can be up. If it's in a person's yard, it can stay up indefinitely, provided it doesn't exceed the two sign rule per residences.
There's no time limit currently in this draft. I, I did hear, um, the, the, the planning commission talking about a one to two week, you know, limit might be what you want to put on signs in the right of way.
Right.
But in this current draft, there isn't a, there are no duration.
Right. I thought we had consensus that we wanted to limit temporary signs um, in a public right of way to two weeks.
Okay, I didn't.
Signs, okay, in that temporary signs of, of that smaller size that's exempted from permitting could stay up indefinitely in a person's yard. Temporary signs that exceeded that and required a permit, I thought that's what we were talking about, for those signs that require a permit on your own property, that we would, we, I thought that's what we were discussing. How long could those stay up?
Yeah, well, I, I think the confusing part is that the section that we're in right now is a section unto temporary signs in general. There's another section for signs in right of ways, and that's, I think, section 80. And there's a previous section on exempt signs. And so right now, section 45 is on temporary signs and it includes provisions on temporary signs in right of ways. And then I don't think it discusses any temporary signs in residential areas, but then that's the following section.
So 045 is all temporary signs, no matter where they are?
Oh, I understood, yeah. And then there's a separate section for right of way in 080, is that?
Yeah, yes. So what, is there a consensus that temporary signs in the right of way are limited to two weeks? Cause I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I heard the discussion, but didn't know if there was consensus.
I, I thought we were talking about 080 for that, the two week limit. That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Want to note that.
Uh, do we need to, do we need to do another straw man? I, 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 I obviously misunderstood, too. We talked about for sign, for temporary signs that don't require permit because they're of a certain size that, um, they would, could stay up indefinitely in someone's private property, but in the right of way, they'd be limited to two weeks. Um, with a show of hands, how many of you thought that we, that, that, that that's what we were agreeing to as a group?
But I thought we were also considering duration, adding duration to those temporary signs as.
All of them.
That's right. That was my understanding. We were considering a duration limit.
Uh, 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 like an annual duration limit?
Well, we, I, I, I don't think that was clarified, but my understanding was two weeks in the right of way. But we need to, we were going to discuss some sort of duration limit for all other temporary signs. Is that, that was my understanding.
That was, yeah, that was my understanding. But I think I, I'm distinguishing temporary signs that don't require permit and temporary signs that do require permit because they're larger. Um, and so for signs that don't require permit, I thought, we, you know, we have two places those can be put in a private property and in a right of way. And on temporary signs that need to be permitted because they're of a certain size, they can also only be put on private property. Well, or the right of way.
Or commercial.
Which is still private property, right?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, Jim?
I, I'm not sure I'm fully grasping what the, the suggestion is, because in the way it's drafted, it says that temporary signs for more than seven days need a permit. We're not talking about changing that to 14, are we?
Um, no, it's just that up, up under exemptions, we've said if your temporary sign is of a certain size, it doesn't need, uh, a permit.
We were really trying to cut, cut down on the administration that was required.
But it still can't be displayed for more than seven days, right?
Unless you get a permit.
Unless you get a permit.
Oh, 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 I see. Um, there are so many interdependencies in the, in these sections. I'm, I apologize for getting tripped up. So.
We were really with this temporary signs of this size. Um, we're trying to, oh, you know, avoid a lot of permit applications, save for political signs.
I, I think that's sensible, but, but Jim brings up a really good point. Further down in the document, it says, um, if you're going to leave your sign up for more than seven days, it requires a permit. But here we're saying those don't require permit, but then are they subject to still the seven days?
They're, they're not because they're exempt. That means
Yeah.
we don't, we're not even, we don't see them as regulators if they're exempt.
But we, we've had a conversation that we said, because of political signs and the fried chicken joint and soccer club and so forth, that putting the burden on the person who installed the sign to have to remove it at a certain time period, which if we don't put a duration on these exempt signs, so I'm only talking about exempt temporary signs, if we don't put a duration on that, then those could legally stay up indefinitely. Correct?
Yep.
Jim?
I, I was just gonna say, we need to have a limit. That is really important to have a limit on these exempt signs because we could get a mess.
You could just require all temporary, I mean, you could take out this exception. Because if they're not getting a permit, the city has no, you know, no record of them. So I'm just saying, one solution could be they all have to get a permit.
Um, yeah, I, I, I liked how you split it up in terms of, you know, the smaller signs could go up, they don't need to be permitted, which helps, you know, with administration. But that we could have a rule that says they can only stay up as we discussed for two weeks. Then for signs that are larger than those that are exempt, they have to be permitted. And that they would have a duration and some sort of term around how often you could renew that, that piece. So for me, it's kind of clear in my head that we're talking about temporary signs, like bifurcated when they're small. Certain conditions apply when they're larger, different conditions apply. Commissioner Gross?
Well, I, I go back to, uh, well, Commissioner Hicks comments about putting a date on these, these things, no matter where they happen to be. If we have a time limit that they can only be up for one week or two weeks or whatever it is, and there's a date on these signs. Those signs are bugging me, and they've been up there for a month and a half, I can just pick it up and put it in the garbage can. I mean, I, I think a date's a good idea, and, and we, we just put in here, even though they don't get a permit, they can only stay up so long.
We could also collect the fines and then donate it to the youth center. How would you like to administer that, Steve?
Oh, yeah, that sounds great.
Let the community kind of, I, I think in Lake Forest Park, some of the community members will just kind of do their own little policing and take them down. I, I mean, I know I would. I mean, I'll walk around, I see these signs that are up forever, I see the date as well. I just pick it up and put it in the garbage can.
Yeah, it seems like, even though we're calling these exemptions, that, the, that you could say at the top of this, just as, you know, kind of, we, we, we'll work on this language after this meeting. But that, you know, provided that signs that are up for more than two weeks are, are not consider, considered exempt. And I guess what we're saying is that they also, if they don't have a date on them as to when they went up, then they also have lost their exempt status. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think that's really sensible.
I, I, I agree with that.
And that way, for political signs, if somebody does want to start putting political signs up in right of ways for three months, then they would A, need to print the date on it. And then B, they would also need to get that permitted for that, to have them up for the longer period of time, which to your point, Attorney, City Attorney Pratt could help a person whose constituency was entirely an apartment, say, for example.
And this only applies to the temporary.
See, that are of that size.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then all these Black Lives Ma- Black Lives Matter signs would have to come down then according to this, then is my understanding as well.
Yep.
Not in a private property though, right?
I thought you were considering duration for all temporary signs.
Yeah, see, that, that's what I, I, I think what Loz is alluding to is I don't want to limit, you know, statement signs in private property.
I think we address it here, though, on private property. You're allowed, and I can't remember the section it's in now, but you're allowed, beside your address, you're allowed two temporary signs that can stay up. You know, as long as they're smaller, they can stay up indefinitely. That was my understanding of the current language.
On residential, you're allowed two temporary signs. There, there's currently no duration, but if you put a duration in oh, four, five, which applies to all temporary signs, that would apply to the ones on private property.
But that might be a way to address what Commissioner Hicks is saying, that if, if you.
Give a different duration for residential.
If it's on your private property, you know, residential property, then, that you could have up to two temporary signs. You know.
For an unlimited duration.
I mean, that might be a way to address the concern he brought up, which I think is valid. And, and as we mentioned before, you know, having it up on your property, in your, in your property versus at the right of way, where it could create distraction or visibility issues might be a way to tackle that.
Oh, if it's visible in your yard, it's gonna, if it's a sign, it's going to be facing right of way, whether it's on your private property or in right of way. I don't know if you could make that distinction.
I don't, I think, I thought I read somewhere it doesn't actually count as a temporary sign if you can't see it from the road or.
Right, but I guess, what, why are you putting the statement sign in your yard if no one's seeing it?
It might be a affirmation in your garden.
And it's not a sign and we're good. If I can't see it from the right of way, you can keep it up however long you want.
I mean, I, do, any of you have opinions? I mean, giving every homeowner the option to have one of these much smaller signs indefinitely in their, on their private property seems like, you know, something that would be more popular with our community and not feeling like they're, they were being policed on their own property, but that the community as a whole had good, you know, sign code to kind of govern what's happening in more public domains. But give you the freedom as a homeowner to have whatever you want going on in your own yard. Thoughts?
I might add that, yeah.
I agree with that, what you said, Matty.
Commissioner Hicks, thanks. Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Hicks, does that address your concerns?
It does.
But again, if a neighbor wants to put up a, a much larger sign within the limits and has to have it permitted, that's a different story. So we still need to tackle that, right?
So this says signs of six, six feet in area, not higher than four feet. So these are the larger ones that require a permit. We do want a duration on those in residential zones.
I'd love to hear from the rest of you. I think my feelings are, and I think Commissioner Gross's feelings have been made clear too. What is your opinion for, for these larger temporary signs on a person's private residence? What, I'm not sure what the thumbs down means, Commissioner Lee.
I, I just don't think they should be permitted. I, I just don't think should be allowed. I think they should be in the prohibitive. I don't think we should have large signs on residential.
What if you want to announce baby boy born here, whatever? I'm, I don't know, I'm just, I'm grasping it. I'm trying to think of all, or like birthday party banners, you know, that might go up for the day or a big garage sale sign.
Yeah, they could be six square feet and accomplish.
Oh, I, I think that's my point, though. This is bigger than the signs, the smaller, like, political signs. Right? So the idea is if it's like the size of a political sign, it could stay up indefinitely in your yard. But if it's larger than the political sign, but smaller than, you know, but not to exceed six square feet, that needs to be permitted, but we don't have a duration associated with it. So for those signs that you could put in your yard, like a huge garage sale sign or a birthday banner, you'd have to have it permitted. How long can it stay up? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm staring at you guys and, and I have three hands. Let's go, Jim, Walter and David.
Well, I, I think we definitely need a limit for sure, and it would be in terms of two weeks to four weeks, or something like that for me, but we should have a limit on it. That's all I wanted, just express that opinion, because that's what you're asking.
Yes, thank you, Walter.
Oh, I was just gonna try and put into context, like, six square feet's like the size of a healthy poster board. So like, it does seem large, but at the same time, it's not necessarily billboard.
Right. Okay, David?
So just to clarify, so we're saying that some yard, so signs like yard sale signs at this size need to be permitted?
Uh, if they are going to be up for more than seven days, is that correct?
They're going, yeah, more than, okay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So we need to decide if there's a duration, though, for, for those that are going to be up for more than seven days that have been permitted. Do we want to have a limit to the number of days it can be up, consecutive days it can be up? And do we want to limit the number of days per year you could, or number of times you could renew annually for something like that? And so I'd love to hear recommendations on how that might be stated.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
You know, we, we could just come up with some language and, and put that in as an option and, and come back with that, because I think we're, we're getting to the point now where crafting language as a commission, it's probably not the most, best use of your time.
That's, I, it's fair enough. I just was trying to get a sense of where everyone stood in terms of their opinions.
Maybe the question is, anyone have an objection with looking at a proposal along those lines of the, the timeframe? And then consecutive, you know, applications? If not, then we could, we could, we'll, we'll craft an option for you to consider.
Thumbs up if, if everybody's interested in having Director Bennett and City Attorney Pratt. Look, okay, great. All right, let it be so.
And I was wondering for the temporary signs, if you wanted to have the same size basically in all zones? Or did you think there was some merit in allowing the more commercial zones to have bigger temporary signs? Right, this is written, so they're all the same size.
I think so.
So I'll just leave it for now.
The Commissioner Lee is interested in keeping it the same.
I am as well.
Okay, David?
Would this include the area, the, like, the town center?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm interested in allowing signs to be a different size for town center, for areas like town center.
That, that the temporary signs be allowed to be bigger?
Yeah. For those specific areas. Commercial areas.
I, I might ask too, that there's a duration associated with those that you, that you two could recommend to us as well. Okay. Attorney Pratt, you want to take us to the next section?
Um, I did hear at the last meeting, I think there was some concern, she's not here tonight, but she had concern, I think, about only allowing two temporary signs on residential property. I don't think, I think that's where she was concerned with the limit. And I would say, an example would be, you know, your two temporary signs might be made up of your home security signs. Or maybe one is a home security sign, and the other one is your, you know, Black Lives Matter sign. But I, a lot of people have home security signs, and that would be one sign out of the two. It still might be enough for you guys, but I did hear what I thought might be.
Melissa, you had brought that up. David, did you have something on point you wanted to say?
I apologize, I keep not putting my hand down.
Commissioner Gross?
Just to clarify, what, i- if, if your temporary sign, so to speak, i.e. your alarm system is screwed, glued to your siding on your house, is that a temporary sign? Or is it just part of your siding?
It's a permanent sign. It wouldn't be a temporary sign.
Well, it's just part of your house.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that I would be in favor of increasing the amount of temporary signs allowed in residential areas. I mean, during campaign season, we have, like, last year, we had four city council candidates up for election, and so some, a lot of people had four city council banners in their front yard. And the way this is written, that would not be allowed.
Believe me, we don't want to get into that enforcement.
Oh, which to the state, oh.
Picture.
Okay, and then Walter, if you're done, will you put your hand down? Please, thanks for that. Any comments on Commissioner Hicks's recommendation? Yes, Lois?
I think, you know, my observation was that they were largely in the right of way. So they were, you know, following the temp right away.
He makes a valid point. There were many people who had signs for each of the open seats in their yard. So I, I think it's a valid, a, a point that we should consider. Whether we need to decide on it tonight or, or like, I, I, I feel like we should sort of wind down our conversation and, and let City Attorney Pratt and Director Bennett, you know, work on, on some recommendations based on our conversation, if that's okay. All right, are there other things you want to highlight for us in this code that?
I think maybe the number of signs in these commercial zones, if, if those, we didn't really change those, but that would be something you could change.
Okay, might I ask that commissioners take a look at the rest of this and flag any other items that might need discussion that we could pick up at our next meeting? Is that something that you all could be prepared to tackle? And I think if we could move through in this fashion with the rest of it and updates, based on our conversation tonight, we could, we could get to a place where we're ready to make some, make our recommendations formal for council. Does that feel sensible to each of you?
That's good to me.
Okay. All right, so is there anything you need, more you need from us, City Attorney Pratt or Director Bennett, to take this document to the next draft?
I can certainly make some, give you some options based on what, you know, I heard tonight. I, you know, probably not in a lot of places did I see a thumbs up, but from a consensus. But I can certainly heard your discussion and can give you some options.
Okay, excellent, and then.
A good discussion on that. That was, that was very helpful.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to move us into any new business?
Uh, no new business from staff.
Okay. Reports or announcements?
Um, I, I think, I told you last time, if I didn't, it may have been mentioned that our city arborist is, is resigning. This is her last week. She's going to start her own business. And so we'll be trying to fill that position as soon as possible. But in the meantime, we, we have a, a private firm that has done work for us in interim periods before. It will continue to do the major tree permit review and analysis so that we can continue to provide the type of service. And we won't be changing the, the price to residents. The arborist, the, the major permits are, are on hourly rate, but we'll just continue to charge the, the, the current hourly rate for, for the arborist. I think it's ninety-five dollars an hour if, if it exceeds the, an average major permit. So that's a, a one wrinkle in the planning department. So I don't think I have anything else.
Okay. Uh, well, with that, do we have, that brings us to citizen comments. And do we have any, anybody listening in tonight that would like to comment? I don't have that screen. I don't have that screen open, Nick. Is anybody?
Oh, that's me. I have one person, one attendee still, um, but I'm not seeing a hand raised.
Okay, well, I'm gonna give that just a minute, because that seems highly unusual. Okay, well, I will. Close citizen comments now. Um, an agenda for our next meeting, it, it would strike me that. Um, based on our progress tonight and what we have left, that the larger majority of our next meeting probably ought to be. The sign code, uh, is that, would that be all of your assessments as well? Um, I would like to ask with enough lead time, I, when I consider our work plan. Um, and particularly the item about the reasonable use exception. Um, that's been brought up to our group multiple times by, um, a community member, Julian Jing. That it might be helpful for us looking ahead to a, you know, an upcoming meeting. To have some understanding on, you know, our, the reasonable use exception law. Our current process and administration, uh, and enforcement as kind of a, a primer. Um, for conversations or evaluating, you know, the current, um. Like I said, the current administration and enforcement of our, uh, R U Es in our community. And I, I just wonder if, if anybody else has a recommendation for how we get started with that conversation. Um, so that our city staff can, um, you know, have enough lead time to prepare. In other words, do you, would, would that be helpful for us to have input from City Attorney Pratt? On the law around our U Es and information from Director Bennett on the administration and enforcement of our U Es?
I think so, personally.
Uh, David?
I agree.
Okay, all right, so not perhaps for our next meeting, because it sounds like we'll have a full docket to wrap up sign code, hopefully. Hopefully be, and the wrapping up stages, but maybe then for our main meeting, we could kick off, um. At least part of that meeting, uh, with the sort of a presentation, would that work for the two of you or could you consider it and we can talk offline, Director Bennett? Go ahead.
In April, is that what you're?
Uh, no, in May, I'm, I'm, I'm believing that April will be full.
Right.
Finish, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's what I meant to say, May, so that, that, I, that, I think will work on, on our end. Does, does that work for you, City Attorney Pratt?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well, great. So then we don't even have to have a agenda for next meeting, at our next meeting, because we just did it. Okay, um, is there any other, anything else we need to discuss, anything you left off? Okay, this has been a really, I think, a fruitful conversation. Again, um, Director Bennett and City Attorney Pratt, thank you so much for all the preparation. And for fielding our questions, helping us, you know, make more informed decisions and, and thank you fellow commissioners for, uh. I think a really useful conversation tonight. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing that all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Excellent. It was wonderful to see your happy faces and we'll see you again next month.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Good night.